Of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Okay, we've got the agenda ahead of us. Is there any additions, corrections, deletions?
I'll move to approve the agenda.
Okay. Daniel.
Eugene.
Okay, got a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, with that, behind that in the packet is the board minutes from last Monday's meeting. Is there any additions or corrections there? If there are none, we're in order for a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Got a motion and a second to approve the minutes from April 27th meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, first item of business is secondary roads. Dave?
I do have an addition if you'd so consider it.
Okay.
We've got quotations from Bolt Norris Asphalt and Hennington Construction on the Crawford County line. Discuss that and maybe take some action one way or another depending on what Crawford County does.
Okay, so you want to add asphalt bids to Crawford County, Carroll County Road?
Yeah.
Okay.
M-64 on the Carroll Crawford County line.
Need a motion to add that to the agenda?
So move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to add the asphalt bids for M-64 on the Carroll Crawford County line. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, Dave?
Guess I'll start with maybe an easy one if I can find it. I didn't leave it at the office. Crafted gravel was into the Richland Pit to make some material, some special backfill material for Hennington, who's working on 141. They're setting their plant up there. And they figure they might have a couple thousand tons of that left. They made 12,000 tons of it. They might have a couple thousand tons of it left when they get done, when Hennington gets done, based on the requirements of that job. They also produce 10,000 tons of road gravel, which is the last of the last there. Either one of those would be $4 a ton. We had gradations on them both. I've looked at both piles. Pretty good-looking stuff. Al looked at them too, and he agreed. $4 a ton is kind of in line with what we have in that apparently clean-up pit. That's kind of the end of the period. Here's the gradations that gradations make the old B spec for the gravel and for the special backfill are actually better than that. The special backfill is in finer material. They crush the top size a bit to three quarters instead of an inch and a quarter if that like to be with our road gravel.
What do you do with that backfill?
Maybe make real good road gravel. Yeah, it's actually a kind of rockier road gravel, is what it is. It would be a better grade road gravel. It's the same stuff, same gradation you bought from Vale, though I don't think it's quite as rocky as the stuff we bought from Vale.
So is that better or worse? If it's not quite as rocky?
It's worse. They usually want more rock. Yeah, I think they paid six and a half a ton plus $3 for the stuff from Vale, and this is $4 a ton, so it's two and a half dollars a ton less in the pile. And that's just the 2,000-ton component. The other road gravel is pretty well in part with the road gravel about dollars. Some of the best I've seen by there out of Richland Pit. Pretty informal proposal, but...
Do you have room for it in the 15 budget, or you put your plan for it after July 1st?
Oh, I think we could probably go either way. We could probably look and see where we were at last build day if we were in trouble with anything. And go that way. I think they would go either way, or just pay then or pay now. I would guess if it was strictly account category, that's probably not.
Probably not 15?
Probably not 15, yeah. If we were strict about that, but we may have some leftover and some other categories that we could pay it with without going on to the total amounts.
Price seems right.
Price is right in the neck of the woods, yeah. I was pleased with the way it looks, and that's, I think it's something that behooves to happen.
Can you use that in the east half of the county more or less?
Yeah. Yeah, cut it down there. It's not a paved road. That's one of the other avenues that location.
Is that the kind that mixes well with lime?
This probably would mix pretty well with lime, yeah. There's really been about three areas of this pit, and each area's had kind of different characteristics. And these are desirable for asphalt because it's a little cleaner over that area. There's clay over there, but there's not that much. So I think it's, yeah, it's a worthwhile product.
Any other comments? Need a motion to move forward?
I say move.
Second that.
Okay, got a motion and a second to, for the bid for the gravel, for the 10,000 and the 2,000 at $4 a ton. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign.
I abstain from voting. Please record it as such.
Okay.
I've got a couple of right-of-way abandoned proposals, and they're different as night and day. And we've used the abandonment resolution or the resolution of abandonment in the past to access right-of-way, like in a curb we had, we've done it. And little towns, I've got a resolution of abandonment that we did back in 2003. This was in the town Maple River to get rid of an alley. Anyway, the first one, which I'll explain and pass it around, is Sherwood Avenue over in Clinton. Remember that street that we paid, or we partially paid a portion of that? People at the very north end of it, there's either two or three people up there would like this section of the road abandoned. It's not even really there. It's there on the drawing, but there's no physical road there yet. It's a 49 and a half of road or a three rod road. There's a lot on one side or a 16 and a half foot on one side, 33 feet on the other side. What's circled here is the area that they would like to abandon. The road would physically stop at, as it pretty well does right now, right at the bottom of the circle here, which is a little bit clearer in this aerial photo where it would stop. It actually goes clear up, if there were a little clear up, into Reivers' property. It touches that.
So basically, it would become a private drive?
It would become, yeah, the property of, you know, they own it now. We would lose our easement to it. Here's a plat of it that was drawn by the surveyor. The three landowners have signed that. Shows where they want to abandon it, where it ends at, and where the disposition of the property would go. Pass that on. It appears that we could use the resolution of abandonment to, you know, get rid of the easement. I'm debating whether we would need to have a hearing or not. And it appears maybe to be on the safe side, we might want to have a hearing with this because it says deny access to the road by adjoining landlords. Reivers' access to that road will be denied once that end is closed. Those, the other ones, those other adjoining landlords will still have access to it.
But he signed it, right? So he has the right?
He's not going to cause any buzz, but I think they're probably just, for legal aspects, maybe have to have a hearing.
Well, I think you have to have jury duty.
Yeah. So we have to have a hearing on that one. Maybe while we were doing it, we would maybe have a hearing on this next one. Talk about, I'm not sure just how quick I want to get in here on either one of those. This one looks like it's kind of a dumb deal. This one, I'm thinking it is, but I'm not really sure. There's an area ground in Maple River, this crosshatch area, which really is pretty meaningless if you just look at the plat. This is from 1938. On the bottom, it says changed on the 1938 tax list. They want for $300 a 2.8 acre piece here. Right around 1939, which is the year of our first aerials, good aerials that we had, that's the oldest ones that we have, and I think the oldest ones you can get on the ISU site. There were some work done there. It appears that they changed the road. They have done a channel change. This one is the clearest. You can kind of see that crosshatch triangle, it's right there on Maple River where they might have done a channel change. It looked like it was going around to the north. They brought it through.
What section is that?
And they brought the bridge through.
Section...
Section, oh, sorry. I'm doing two things there. And that's maybe why they had that big piece of right-of-way in there.
Which piece is it?
That would maybe show it better. And this will show it better yet.
Okay, because in talking with Carl, here about a week or so ago, that was a mess as far as that survey on that.
Oh, yeah, the landowners, there was different land ownership. And so as we go down this, the people that were interested in purchasing a portion of this property to use, which is kind of right down in here on the south side of the river, they have obstacles, they've become one of being this roadway, these ones in there. And Semke, in doing this survey, just another plat of that, discovered that our current road, our current alignment, does not really fit the description. So our current road does not lie wholly within the easement team, which in a way is not a big deal. If the road's there invisible, the road goes there and it stays. But it's nice to straighten stuff out when you have an opportunity. And he's done a lot of survey work, and he's showing a survey here that would map the road out and put it where it actually is. And has written a description that pretty well near this old center line, which was the original survey, other than a rotation of it to get the location more precise. We're still missing, I think, ownership on this side of the road. So if this all would come to pass, the abandonment of this crosshatch area here, trade would be the gaining of an easement over here, or a description of that.
People who live in this area there.
We don't have a need that I can think of to maintain a roadway easement out in this crosshatched area.
So this line here is where the actual easement is at? Is this where the actual, is that the dark line that's up there?
Kind of those dashed lines of where the road wants to be at, you know, where it is right now. This, then taking the legal description and plotting it on there, is similar to the line of, similar to the line that was drawn on that northeast edge there of that original 139 plot, that legal shoot there.
So on the redrawn one, it's fence line to fence line?
Fence line to fence line. The, that would be a description of actually where the road's at. This here, if it's rotated, this line here would kind of be the center line of the road. But it has to be rotated and moved to make it fit.
Improperly assuming there's fences there, the way fences have left in the last year. But I just want to make sure we're doing the whole area, not just like the roadway.
And they are. I've been looking for, you know, why would we have had 1938? Why would we have this big easement? I'm thinking it might have been related to the road change, because they changed, made the road where it is now in 39. They must have done a channel change, because it looks like the channel meandered up to the north, and that would have been within this. So that must have been all part of this that they did, and they never abandoned it. It's not something we need. I hear rumors about that business, whether it's going to come or go, you know, I just kind of wait and see what happens.
On this, would we want to wait until we get a, signatures from the owners requesting abandonment? Or do we want to abandon it upfront?
The owners, if they do it, you know, they're going down the path, I think, and they've got, they've got obstructions in their path to do what they want to do. And, but if they make it that way, yeah, I think they would ask us to do it in a signature.
So I just want to get straight. Are, you're just informing us because you assume or think that they probably will request this? Or is this something you want to take care of whether they request or not? Because our road is a little bit off-key.
Now that I know it, we could take care of it whether, it would be a good time to clear the records up.
Okay. All right, so whether, irregardless of what the owners do, you think we should move forward, do you at all right-of-way, correct it? And that would involve letting go of that area there?
Do we actually own, have an easement, or do we own that property?
We have easement.
Okay, so we're just giving up easement?
This, you know, this amazing, like, right-of-way public highway.
Okay. So we own the property?
We have, I don't know any, do we own any property that we actually own for road right-of-way?
Well, when we do some projects with bridges, we purchase some property sometimes.
Well, we always buy by easement.
Buy the easement.
Buy easement, yeah. When the oil well people were here, they scoured the records very thoroughly. I think they ruled road right-of-way wise to make sure, and we at that time had some by warranty deed that we had taken, and they converted those to easements. This is on her back in the mid-'80s. They, I think they were expecting maybe to use something through the roadway as possibly. So, I don't know of anything that we've got by warranty deed. Now, that's typically for the state to buy by warranty deed, ownership. We would always block by easement just to keep the titles clear.
Sure.
And not to confuse it, but doesn't Conservation own some ground just on the other side there?
To the south of there.
On the trail, yeah. Yeah, it's, I would hate to done that survey. It's a pretty remarkable survey with all those lines in there. And then plus, plus trying to fit our easement and rotate it and, you know, take a survey that was done back in the '30s with probably a rag tied around the wagon. Something far less sophisticated on GPS, and they could come together with this. But that's, that's the surveyor's plight to try and model what was done in the past and mirror that. Finding out with roads, if we, even if we don't have easement, if visually you can see that the road's there and we don't have a piece of paper, that takes over precedence.
The thing of this one is, is at least it clarifies it for future use or anything. I mean, that way it's clean and it's done. This isn't the first time we've run into something like this. We've run into a railroad right-of-way in Litterdale. I mean, it, it happens all the time, but it's just good to get it cleaned up.
Yeah. And we have the technology today to make it easier. So I suppose we could have a hearing to do both of those at the same time. And if we do do a hearing, this one doesn't appear to need a hearing. My section of the code, might just as well read that here. 306.11, hearing place and date. "If the proposed vacation is part of a road right-of-way held by easement and will not change the existing traveled portion of the road or deny access to the road by adjoining landlords, a hearing is not required." So I, that second one seems to fit that criteria. The first one would deny access to Reivers' at the very end, so it appears that a hearing would be the safe way to go on that one, even though I think we've got agreement on that one.
I would be in favor of having a hearing on both of them, and I'm not aware of any downside. I don't expect any issues.
Yeah.
But let the public have their say. Let's be transparent about it, have a hearing. It's really not a lot of work for us.
If we do do a hearing...
Makes it really clean, then.
We'll need to publish it in the newspaper, and we need to adjoint it, do all adjoining landowners, utility companies, everybody we can find on that with certified mail.
Okay.
So there will be a little more work.
Sure, sure.
But it's pretty insignificant.
This deal at Maple River's been wrong for 65 years, like Marty. I agree with Marty. We need, it's time to correct it. The other one, the landowners all agree, and I'm not aware of any downside, but there may be one we've not recognized.
No, I'm not either.
I mean, I can't think of why giving up that easement would, on Sherwood I'm talking about, or either one would be of any disadvantage to us.
No.
But maybe someone has a perspective that we've neglected to identify, but...
Yeah, I don't think, as long as we got a road, I don't think we could use it for a stockpile area for it. You know, we've got an easement for roadway purposes, not for stockpile or anything else. I don't, I don't think we'd drive any, any other rights other than sticking a roadway there on either one, so...
At this point, we want to set a date and time for a public hearing?
Could I come back to you with that next week? Maybe so I could kind of think it out, because we've got a lot of stuff that's going to be happening here in the foreseeable future anyway.
Okay, that's fine.
I see no issue in delaying it a week, so we'll work with you there, Dave.
Okay.
That's all right?
Yeah, I have no problem with that.
It's been 65 years, what's another week?
That's right. Well, the best time to plant a tree was 20 years ago, you know, so we better get it planted now if we can. That was the next best time.
What's the rush?
We actually had a road blow up the other day, north of the county home, a blow up on the concrete in April.
Was it a blow up or a frosty?
Oh, blow up. It just came together, and one slab ran over the other, and you blow up like you get in the middle of July when it's 100 degrees.
Explain to me how that happened, why that happened.
We don't know. Now, only one. It was two reported, but I think the other ones were just...
Must have been a lot of traffic on that road that day.
Did it register on the register stamp?
I was going to say, was there a fault there or some kind of fault line?
Let's see here. Utility permits.
Will the road shoulder in the field next to it now?
Something's coming together.
I've got two utility permits. The first one is from Windstream. Looks like they want to replace 200, 2,282 feet of buried filled copper. Twelve pair, 24 gauge telephone by file on Birch Avenue. And this is on Birch, down south of Manning, that paved road south of Manning, and 330, 30th Street in Orange. And as near as I can tell, they're proposing to go into the road ditch where they've got the two notes on their plans, flawed cable and bottom of ditch. So that shouldn't cause a whole lot of trouble. This one, the next one's a Raccoon Valley Electric Corporation, R-V-E-C. Is that right?
You got it right. Not R-E-C, R-B-E-C.
Well, it took about a year, maybe two. They want to do a bore across 295th Street down in Newton Township for Rick Whitrock.
I did them.
I'm thinking since, yes, in section nine of Newton Township.
Is Newton or Union?
Pete Newton. Be north of Dedham.
This one says Newton, so...
Be north of Dedham.
I'm hoping the best.
Okay.
I don't know if the Dedham means...
There is a 295th Street there, but that's, I did research, property orders. Got it bad.
Okay. I believe Newton would be correct.
both the utility permit.
Okay, got a motion and a second.
Got that one. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Item D 2015 grader purchase. I called the grader guy, and I thought, oh, gosh, I didn't say anything to you guys to give me a price on grader. So he's going to give me a price this way on a grader in trade that I'll be bringing to you. Do with my chinline, but that's coming. Rise Grant has proceeding ahead. Thanks to Chris. It appears that on the 12th, if I've got my...
Yes.
Day is right. There will be a meeting in the commission either at 10:30 or 11:30, which I think remained clear. And we need to come about 15 minutes early. We'll need some delegates. I think some West Central people are going to go. Chris is going to go. He says he's not going to be the spokesman, but I figured. I don't want to be. So I'm not sure who's going to be the spokesman, but no doubt we would need some visiting dignitaries. This made me wonder. We would, names of the commission room, I think.
That's on the 12th of May?
That's on May 12th, yeah.
I can sure go.
I don't think, you know, we don't need a whole entourage, I don't think, but...
What time is it on the 12th?
Well, they're saying 10:30 or 11:30, and they would clarify that here pretty soon.
Okay.
We're going to, Darren and Paul, I think, got the plans good enough done to where we can send those down today so they can take them to the director and get informal approval from him or get into the process. It kind of sounds like that's where it goes first, it goes to the commission, then it might go back to the director. If we are successful, we'll want to really get on the stick. We're taking the plans, we've made two... we made two divisions, uh, a division for outside the Rise project and a division for the Rise project, it would be funded from some proportion of the Rise, so we can let that whole project as one, so maybe we'd get, you know, more than one bid, I, I think we'll have one really competitive bid, I don't, maybe, maybe we'll get more than that. Here's our asphalters' schedule, uh, and they're, they're due to start in June, actually they're gonna start over at Rawlsman in, in June, and, uh, work on the asphalt till about the end of June, and then work on the shoulders from the end of June, uh, oh, around July fifth or sixth.
So this is the Alba Roader and Fort, and Fort.
Yeah, that one, I think, well, just because it's got the most quantity on it.
Looks like it starts mid of June, yeah.
So, um, we had a pre-con with them, and I think they're.
Is Rosell gonna be done by then?
Uh, I hope so. I hope so.
Is Chris taking a band-aid?
Don't know.
I can talk to him today, I gotta go out there today for some other stuff.
I could go to that.
I'll plan on going too.
Yeah.
Gosh, while you guys go, maybe I stay home.
Then I'll stay, then I'll stay home.
You're not getting out of this one.
You're gonna have to probably wear a tie. Licker said he was gonna wear one and a sport coat too. I think the lady was central, Alicia, I can't remember.
Alicia Clancy.
Alicia Clancy, yeah.
She made you some speeches, maybe, I don't, I don't think we have to have, I don't expect that.
Chris can speak.
Chris can speak, yeah, he's smooth.
I know the vice president of operations over there, I can talk to him, see if he could speak.
So, but anyway, if we do do that, we'll probably want to put together letting just as quick as we can to, to capture our asphalters here, Henningson is now working on one forty-one, you know, they would be in, in a good place at, or simply at Richland Pitt, I don't know if we're gonna get to do that, I think Tri-State's kind of around and, uh.
Norris.
Norris is around in, in a big way.
Yeah.
And, and right close, so, uh, hopefully that can all come together, that's, is it to be wished for?
Salem mobilization?
Yeah.
You'll let us know on a time, for sure.
I will, yeah, I'll find out, probably sometime this week, maybe yet today.
Chris, I'll probably email everyone.
I'll talk to him today, I gotta go out there, we can call for another issue today, so does it look?
Apologies for leaving, um, do you have someone on May twelfth, I would be available otherwise.
Oh, yeah, three so far.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine.
I think we're starting at Kentucky Fried Chicken, as we call it, it's starting on the way home.
All right. Got four now, no? Three, three's plenty, three's plenty.
Henningson, Norris, Henningson's on one, one side, Paul got the one from Henningson, so we took, we skimped out their quantities and their, uh, light items, it's, they, they missed a few, if, before a formal bid, they just, they hit the, hit the big ones, uh, the important ones, missed a few minor little things that, uh, were just inclusive. So then we gave Norris the same list and, uh, they kind of did it their own way, they got the same thing in there, used the same quantities, it appears Norris is the low bid. Norris's bid in looking at what we got from their actual bid, they were, on that road to the north of there, they were sixty-five thousand, one hundred and forty-four dollars per inch mile, and doing that same math on this with the seven point four miles, this is sixty-six thousand, seven hundred and seventy-four dollars per inch mile, and it's a, it's a two and a half inch, both of them were two and a half inch, uh, jobs, uh, so they're, they're right in line with what they bid, uh, on M sixty-four, the two miles north of there, uh, through the state letting contract, so they, they did what they said they would do.
And just a mile north, it was what?
M sixty-four is sixty-five one hundred and forty-four per inch mile, and this is sixty-six, seven seventy.
I got that.
Just kind of, kind of a simple way to summarize them, but it, it does give me a good feel for overall costs, had a lot of shoring material on this, but this, this road's got wide shoulders and the shoulder's down right now, so a large component of that, that bid is shoring material. Yeah, yeah, it's, it's enough to, and the, uh, the asphalt binder that shows up, they, we specified sixty-four twenty-two on our job, which is actually a, a little better binder than PG fifty-eight point eight, is what, uh, Henningson specified on their bid, and, uh, anyway, he, he wrote me that it should be sixty-four twenty-two, that's what they're gonna be supplying for binder, the better, the same stuff that they bid us on our job. Paul said he would talk to his board tomorrow, uh, I, I think they seem to be in general approval of it, everything I've heard, that, that it's, uh, it's okay with them, I told him I would talk to you guys today, if, if I could get a tentative approval or disapproval based on what they do, uh, you know, see where it goes.
Once again, this will be fifty-fifty, this amount, farm to market?
This, this will be all on.
Local funds, okay.
All on the local fund, next year's funding, uh, and we'll spend it on maintenance rather than construction, uh, it's on the borderline, whether it's, it's kind of heavy maintenance. Be using the new gas tax money that we're gonna gain.
Will Crawford also be using tac, new gas tax money on this?
They will.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think.
So that's good, I think.
This, we would want to say, because I think it's a really good project, the, the two of us working together, both using our new gas tax money on a, on a joint project in a pretty timely fashion, that it seems to be a reasonable price.
How did it fit with the engineer's estimate? Do you have that? Couldn't have come any closer, could you?
I think you, I think you got very close.
He kept his bid before he did that.
Yeah. I was just gonna say, don't plan on spending that at KFC next week. Ain't gonna reach. Better bring your wallet, Marty.
That's what I'm telling you.
Crawford have the same estimate?
I don't know.
What Dave's not telling you is it was his estimate.
I, you know, I, I use this as a basis for my estimate.
And that's what?
That's, that's our bids or our, our contracts on these, these roads, one, one forty-nine, so we got a road right next door to the, right, set right at the top of it, hooked to it, and what they told me, and what I talked to Brady, uh, that they would price it, just adding on the additional haul, uh, and I think that's just exactly what they're doing, this is, it's, it's, all the materials are coming from the north, and so this is all further south, so it's, it's gonna fall a lot, four, five, six more miles further haul or even more, so it appears they, they did what they said they were gonna do.
I'll make a motion to approve the subject to the outcome of Crawford County Board's review.
Tagging it.
Okay, got a motion and a second to approve the bid with Norris' asphalt paving on M sixty-four, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same thing, motion carries.
Now, we've, we've talked about some other, uh, the Rise project, and we're, we're gonna turn that, we were talking about doing that kind of half and half, half negotiated and half, half rise, we're gonna try and just do the whole, whole thing together and, see where that falls, as division one, division two, uh, and let that go, so we won't be doing any negotiated stuff on that, that'll actually be a construction project, and we'll have to have to amend our secondary road budget to, to fit it into the program, more or less we'll have an open budget if it, if it happens in this year or next year, so there'll be some more hoops to jump through for that, but they're all doable too. I think that's about it, um, I've got a grain, nine and thirteen, probably, Marty knows something about, maybe Marty and I probably ought to go and look at before we bring it up for, for doing anything with it.
Can get ahold of you, maybe, we'll see what tomorrow brings.
Okay.
We're a bit moving today, but I'll get ahold of you tomorrow.
I think that's it.
Rosell. I see they're trimming the east side now, but I'd say that I'm not really after it, didn't fill that other piece in last week while they were there.
Yeah.
I think that's, our beams are worthless, worthless, really.
For that other part, yeah, well, they could put maintenance mix in there.
Well, they can sum it up to it. Of course, a bit of merch and help the cause there.
Yeah. We'll all be glad when that's done.
Amen, amen.
Pretty well essentially done in Dedham.
Willie.
Or, I'm sorry, Willie, yeah, I did, we did that last week, rubbing off on it.
Yeah, I, I think that looks, that looks pretty, I think they're, they're gonna be succeeding this week, as far as, as far as I've heard, but that's, okay.
And then have you heard anything more from John about his project?
No, I haven't, you know, I.
I haven't either.
I haven't either.
Dave, do you know when Crawford County will be making a decision on this?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
I'll call him and tell him that, of the results.
And another logistic thing on, on the grader purchase, will you have a bid by next meeting, or?
I'm hoping so, he was, he was gonna try and get here, I think it might be Friday by the time it gets here now.
Probably.
It's scheduled, and, but I think he's gonna try and get here midweek and look at our trade and our, our trade, and we're gonna trade off a nineteen ninety-seven machine, our oldest machine that's got fifteen thousand plus hours on it, uh, it's been, been a real good machine, we're just kind of hung onto it, but it now is the older, oldest, and it's not gooder than anybody else, so it's, it's gonna go, and he's gotta look at that before he, before he gives us a number. We've got our, Crawford County's bought some, and Green County's bought some, so we should have some good comp numbers, uh, to give off of those adjoining counties.
Are they gonna give you with and without trade, so the comp numbers will be comparable?
I hope, yeah, they always do give with and without trade.
Okay.
And, and they treat the trade as actual dollar value, right, to the claim value, because we, we always ask for a straight cash price, and that, this could be a little difficult kind of matchup here in the cars, because they'll be different equipment, some is sold, it's the same dollar.
Yes.
So who are you working with on this?
Caterpillar.
Caterpillar, yeah.
I heard from John, he was, they want, he wanted to have a special election, put it as a public measure, and the earliest he could do that was August, he wasn't happy, and that's all I ever got. They didn't have to have a special election, but he wanted to have a special election, but.
I bet it's dead.
All we can do is wait it out.
I mean, they can take counsel, counsel for both, we're all right.
Okay. We're gonna visit about the UTV ATV, are you gonna stick around for that, do you have any comments to share?
The only thing I, I've seen, two past surveys on the county engineers service bureau website, and of the respondents, there wasn't a lot of county engineers that were in favor, or counties as a whole that were in favor of that, that's the only thing I, and those were, they were in the past, I think one was around two thousand and twelve, I'm not sure when the last one, but one was, and they weren't, they weren't responding to it anywhere near a hundred percent, but that was, that was there.
In the reasoning?
I think safety. And, and I think it was this, you know, this was boards as a whole, they, they seemed to do them for events, they had some, uh, ordinances or resolutions that they could drive up for events, a couple of them did, but not many of them, and, and I haven't seen them recent, now, all counties and, and any other source to, to give that, I really haven't thought, thought through it too much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
Have a good week.
Thank you, and I'll see, I'll stop. I'll cut out if you don't mind.
Yeah, that's fine, I'll get ahold of you tomorrow morning.
Okay.
Dave, I'll be giving you a call later on.
Okay.
That will go down, the second item is the UTV ATV ordinance discussion, and I'd like to welcome Tyler Nelson from Elton Outdoor Power Sports, who'll go around doing interactions. I'm Marty Danzer, chairman of the board.
Hi Tyler.
Neil Bock.
Hi.
Gene Miners.
Dean Shetler.
Mark Beardmore.
Hello.
Welcome, Tyler. Okay, John, you, you've put together the ordinance, has everybody had a chance to review that?
Well, and of course, since that, I've got another draft, which is, that's our draft number four, and there are some minor things that are on there, first, I, I tried to incorporate what the board asked for, the concerns that were expressed last time, and, and there's a lot of intertwining, uh, they have home rule powers, the county, uh, the counties have the authority to impose.
Do you have one more?
Oh. Counties have the authority to impose fees, but not taxes, uh, there's, there are issues of preemption with regard to, uh, certain, uh, types of allowances that can be made, uh, of course, the Iowa code has plenary authority for driving regulation under chapter three twenty-one, but then you have the specific grant of authority to authorize ATV, UTVs under three twenty-one I, so putting that all together, there were some ideas that I have, uh, think are questionable legality, as, as well as not too practical, I assisted with the county reporter, Marilyn Duffey, about ATV registration, uh, she had concerns along the same lines that I have concerns, I, I really question the, uh, the legality of a county imposing, uh, much of a fee on ATVs, because it sounds more like a tax than a, you know, than a fee, I don't know how you justify twenty-five dollars, uh, and counties aren't authorized to impose taxes, you know, alone taxes on motor vehicles, and that was the other question was, are these motor vehicles, yes, they are, uh, if there are lawful use on road, you know, is restricted, uh, Marilyn Duffey also reported to me that she believes that philosophically, the state DNR, their ultimate goal is to get all these things registered, you know, that brings in a lot of money, and that's what they would like to do, so that was the first thing that I wanted to clear up, the second thing, I wanted to make sure that, that it was within our power to require these vehicles to have insurance, because I think having insurance is kind of a key part, if you're gonna have a vehicle on the road, you ought to have it insured, and I'm absolutely convinced, and that was the purpose of including more language in section two, where I cite the Iowa code provisions for the proposition that, yes, we can require insurance, and that's sort of a, a brief summary of those sorts of laws.
You know, and that's one thing I want to question an insurance agent, you know, like on a vehicle, you get a, a ID card, but like on these, like on a farm liability, you can have like a farm liability policy, and it's under a liability policy, but it'd be nice to have some sort of card made up, and I don't know if insurance companies would be willing to do that or not.
Or even just carry a, a copy of your cover page, that'd be fine. Along those same lines, I also got to thinking about how we enforce the insurance law for automobile, if you get pulled over and you don't have proof of insurance with you, you can get a ticket, but then if you show up with proof at the clerk's office. You can get a ticket, but then if you show up with proof at the clerk's office, the ticket's dismissed, but you have to pay the court costs. So I put in that same language in here, so we treat people the same. We're not gonna rely on a, on a pure technicality that you don't happen to have some piece of paper with you. The point is that you're supposed to be insured. So insurance, I believe, is, is absolutely allowed to be required by the county and I think we're on, we're on solid ground. The second issue was, uh, can we require them to be licensed drivers? And I think, uh, you know, clearly we can require them to be licensed drivers. And I don't believe that the county can issue licenses, ATV licenses or anything. So, so this requires them to be insured and their cars have to be driven by a licensed driver. We're not talking about twelve and thirteen year olds driving ATVs around on the streets.
Doesn't that one section, uh, two thirty-four A require driver's license? That's the state code.
That's the state code for any motor vehicle on a street.
So would that require driver's license for this situation?
Yes.
Okay.
And then you go to the next, actually technically, uh, if you've got your kid riding, you're riding a lawnmower across the street to do the neighbor's house, technically that's illegal. But I don't wanna talk about those little minor things. But I think it's clear that we can require people to be licensed drivers. And I think that makes sense. The, the third thing was, and this is something that Tyler Nelson, uh, put me on to, you know, how safe are these things? The safety measures in the states allow generals to reduce. South Dakota, the closest neighbor, Arizona, and there's about ten others. They're as safe, if not safer than motorcycles, which I used to have a motorcycle, remember when I bought it? And, you know, Renee said, what are you gonna do when your son wants a motorcycle? I'm, I'm gonna tell him when he's forty years old, he can have one too. Anyway, getting back to motorcycles, motorcycles have lights on, and I think that's a proven thing to have reduced motorcycle problems. So this ordinance requires these, these ATVs and UTVs not just to have lights, light and heat ability, but the lights have to be on. And then I got talking with Tyler about what kinda lights, you know, can you just take a flashlight and duct tape it to your fender? Uh, you know, or go to a bicycle shop and buy a little bicycle light? No, it, it's gonna need lights, uh, according to industry standards, that's remembered paragraph four, section five, page two. So lights installed and operated according to industry standards and practices. So I've been joking with Tyler that, that this is gonna sell, sell a lot of light kits out there, so, you know, that's okay. But I think having lights, uh, having them have lights and having those lights on, uh, is a key safety measure. The, then there's a few more legal references. I tried to, I tried to make this as consistent as I could with the three twenty-one provisions and I'll, and I'll go over those a little bit. In section five, you can't violate any provision of the ATV law, which is co-chapter three twenty-one I. Some counties have like rewritten all those sections. I thought that was kind of redundant. It also made it complicated. They still have to comply with three twenty-one I. Number two, if that's a repeat of the regular motor vehicle careless driving, and in the vernacular, we're not gonna have people doing cookies on the roads if they're gonna get a ticket for it. Number three was something that is, something that we sort of came up with verbally. I think that, uh, that we don't want roads, roads disturbed. I mean, normal travel is one thing, uh, but you have to have, number four, we talked about lighted, lights front and rear. Number five, liability insurance. Or actually, you could have other proof of information, responsibility, you can, under the code, you can sort of buy an insurance, you can post a bond. I don't know anybody that does that, but I think maybe some big companies self-insure that way, they just post a bond. Six and seven, we don't want the grade B and the grade C streets to become ATV parks. For people to create mud kids and things, so just stay out of the digits on those, on those roads. Eight, if there is a particular problem area, we can always erect signs for any news. I don't know, maybe they'll never come up. Nine, to accommodate the Carroll County Conservation Board, they can adopt rules wherever they want to disallow or, uh, so, um, that's sort of a legal thing. The law is that the conservation board has the control on those conservation areas. So they can do what they want, they can visit those issues.
Does that kinda cover the meandering streams and the provision that you had in draft two, the?
Yeah, that's actually up in number one, Dean, because the meandering stream businesses in three twenty-one I. So I just, and I think Neil, you had a comment too of not repeating all that stuff out of three twenty-one I. It would make the ordinance a couple pages longer.
True.
The meandering streams is, is a violation of three twenty-one I point four.
Okay.
The other issue about, um, suppose someone did violate a provision of three twenty-one I. Would they be charged on, as with an ordinance violation or would they be charged with a three twenty-one I violation? And I'm going to say, we're gonna charge them with a three twenty-one I violation. Cause they're violating the state code. We're not here to make up a bunch of new county laws just so we can write people tickets, that's not our idea. And registration, again, they can be registered in Iowa or they can be registered out of state. The ordinance proposal continues to respect the exemptions under Iowa law, uh, which are for farmers and surveyors and construction people and all those sorts of things. Number eight, penalties, violation is a simple misdemeanor, fines only. You'll be seeing this in probably every proposal that I make from here on out, cause the Iowa string court recently ruled that even on a simple misdemeanor, you're entitled to a court or a lawyer. If you're subject to jail, that's number, section eight penalties. So we're gonna be moving all of these minor offenses to be fined only. I wanna give somebody a fifty dollar ticket and have a run up to five hundred dollar attorney fee bill to be paid by, by the public defender's office. So that's gonna be, again, as we update, selling and every other ordinance we have, I'm gonna recommend that we take out jail. They're not gonna get jail time anyway. If you haven't come up, that's not gonna happen. And then that's, that's all, so. Any concerns that people had that I haven't?
Okay, on, on draft two, you had on one of the items, any street portion improved, is design and ordinary used for vehicle or vehicular travel, Tina, a half an hour after sunset. You've taken that out.
I took that out and that was based upon what I read. You can certainly put that back in. First, the code doesn't prohibit nighttime usage of ATVs. So I found that somewhat destructive. I originally had this idea in my mind, it should be day time only. Tyler Nelson believes that, first of all, you're not gonna have a lot of people drive around at night, but it's just gonna be kind of a hook for somebody. They're gonna be out working at their acreage and drive back into town and then, oh my gosh, this is gonna be a big deal. A lighted motorcycle is operated at night. That was a, just a, I guess I was the one that dreamed up that daytime usage, so.
Well, it's in the other, I think it's, yeah, Crawford County and, and, and Sack County as well.
But do they have the lighted vehicles in there?
I don't know.
They're requiring lights on.
Yes, they do. They simply tell how many feet you have to be able to see the light in their ordinances.
I wanted to raise that question.
Yeah.
I originally had three hundred feet. Uh, actually, I.
And they were different in footage, I think, also.
Yeah. My research is that actually the commercial lights are actually good at about five hundred feet. I don't wanna get into three hundred, five hundred, eight hundred. I think as long as they're having a commercially installed lighting system, it's gonna meet industry standards, it's gonna be whatever those are. So having somebody out with a tape measure and giving somebody a ticket cause they claim they can't see to the two hundred ninety-eight feet. I don't know that that's real meaningful or very enforceable. So that was why I, I took that. I really put that three hundred feet in there, I took it out. I can kinda tell these ordinances, they, they kinda get copied from county to county and without perhaps a lot of critical thinking about, well, is that really necessary or appropriate? I think as long as we have an industry, a factory, aftermarket type of lighting kit as opposed to somebody just like say duct taping a flashlight to their fender. You know, that's not gonna cut it, they're gonna have to have some stricter stuff. And here's the deal, the people that sell these lighting kits, they've got product liability, possibility exposure, so they don't sell lighting kits that aren't, aren't doing the job. They're gonna be, they're gonna be good lighting kits.
In one of the drafts, I think it was the second draft, you had forty-five miles an hour speed limit on these or roads that are designated in forty-five miles or less. So where's that at right now?
Well, then the discussion came with, actually Tyler, I said, well, on the, on the county blacktops, they're gonna be driving on the shoulder and Neil, you mentioned this too. There was quite a bit of feeling that that's actually less safe. And have them just on the pavement. Have people on shoulders and they're soft. And then you're gonna be, it's just.
Okay, so now we're gonna put them on the main road, right? Fifty-five miles an hour.
They can drive on.
On the main, on, on those roads.
On any main street. You can certainly back off of that, you can change that.
So can they go fifty-five miles an hour safely?
Uh, I think some are, are, are able to do that and some are not.
One of the issues was if you're on the Willie Blacktop and you come up behind one that's going forty miles an hour, is that a safe situation?
Bicycles are not a safe situation either. They can legally be on that road at, um.
Same thing with a tractor. You know?
I'm just clarifying it, you know, cause we discussed it before.
And, and I'm glad that way because, continuing on with Willie Blacktop, I can just see all kinds of features in that ditch. Huge culverts that are, maybe got a little reflector or something. And, um, anybody that's on that shoulder is gonna have to go on the road to get around some of them. And I don't want them in the ditch there too bad, cause the, there's all kinds of distractions that wasn't made for traveling with anything. The road probably would be the best place for them.
Not very much for shoulders, do you?
Not much for shoulder there.
I was kinda like, I came up with the idea they're gonna drive on the shoulder. I have no pride of authorship in that idea, I think that I do.
Okay.
I'm gonna hedge on a comment I made earlier. I, I know, uh, some of the other ordinances basically duplicated the state law. I think we should explain a reference a little bit because, um, I, I compliment you in saving a lot of paper. I know like, uh, one of them in section seven was the egg, egg one, which is I nine, I guess. And I'm, I'm thinking of this in perspective of just somebody that's got an ATV and they wanna be legal and they're reading this. It would be nice if they knew that, um, I nine is, has to do with farm, so if I'm a farmer, I know where to go. And, and perhaps it should reference that I nine is the egg exemptions. And maybe that two thirty-four A, which says you shall have driver's license, maybe just hit some, that includes but not limited to having a driver's license and just a few things. So then they'll where to look for the details.
More explanation, okay.
Yeah.
In the state.
Yeah.
State rep.
Right.
I think so too.
And I just think that's a courtesy to the people who wanna obey the law so they can find it. Or know which one to look at. So if I'm a farmer, I'll go to the nine. If I'm not a farmer, I won't even go there, I'll go to the other one to check that out.
So if they only read this and they don't read the others.
That's right.
Followed by these rules, they're violating, they could be in violation at some point in time.
Well, and I also know a lot of companies that uses them for agricultural purposes, they think that they have to come and register. If they don't, they can continue their agricultural use.
Right. So I'd just like that referenced.
Okay, yeah. More explanation in section seven.
Sure. And I know Tyler even commented that duplication is confusing, but referencing wouldn't, would, would probably make it less confusing.
John, section three and, and article four, it essentially means anywhere within the, the right of way. Is that a safe interpretation of that? They can be operated anywhere within the right of way?
Except on Bs and Cs.
Except on Bs and Cs, yeah, right.
Virginia, you have a comment?
What, what is the reason for this ordinance if it's already covered by state law, under state code?
It opens it up beyond agricultural use.
I think our sheriff has some comments, Tyler might as well. I, I talked to Sack County and they have put their reference into, or ordinance in in November, but they have had no issues whatsoever. I never, I never got a call from Sack or Crawford to find out from them, but.
I think Crawford just did theirs about a month or two ago, I think.
Yeah. Sack then is, is November. And I got the sheriff up there and he said they have no issues whatsoever.
Tyler, you have any comments?
Uh, just a few, um, a little bit of research I had done, South Dakota had started monitoring ATV fatalities in nineteen eighty-two and the data stopped in twenty-eleven. And it came out to a little over two a year. And currently in Iowa, we're between thirty-five and fifty a year motorcycle fatalities. So the percentage was, was, South Dakota's kind of our nearest reference point there as far as the states go. Right now, I kinda feel, from, from what I see, that the, the ag use, being able to take them down the road is being abused, um, quite a bit. And I think having, having this ordinance is gonna help to shape it a little bit better of what is actually legal. And, um, putting the age restrictions in there, of course, for, for legalized licensed driver is gonna help with that as well. I think the way the Carroll ordinance is written just does, does its best to mirror a motorcycle. So it's legal for a motorcycle, legal for a UTV. You had spoken that fifty-five, are there some ATVs that, you know, there probably are some that probably shouldn't go fifty-five or even thirty-five maybe? But some of them are very capable of going almost twice that amount. As far as in relation to are they safe? I, I can't see a scenario where they're less safe than a two-wheeled motorcycle where, where balance is part of the equation. With the ATVs and UTVs, you take balance out of the equation. South Dakota went an extra step and they went with DOT approved tires. I don't see where, what that really gains them. I don't really understand, I couldn't really find why they went that route with it. But in regards to safety, that was the only chassis or design change that, that South Dakota decided that they needed to make to make them legal or more safe. I guess that's, that's kinda all I have at this point.
Any other questions or comments regarding the new draft?
I think it was good, but I think it's a good idea to put those references in there.
Well, draft number four will be on its way.
Number five.
Five, five.
Number five. So basically just those two.
Could be changed again, I mean, I mean, this is a work in progress. I, I found it very interesting to, to, you know, do all the reading that I've, I've done and find out, you know, about these things and, and, um, it's. Are you gonna have an ATV death in the next few years? Probably. It's mattered relative safety, we're gonna have people get killed. I just heard a tragedy a couple days ago, an eight-year-old.
Green County.
In Green County?
Yeah.
Now, I don't know what in the world you're doing with an eight-year-old driving a two thousand pound motor vehicle on the road, but it's a tragedy.
Does Iowa code three twenty-one, um, cover what an ATV is or LTV or?
Yeah.
Goodness.
Yeah, there's another reference in there too.
Oh, and then Jeff, about the number five draft that shows that we are studying issues, we can just slam it together.
I think, uh, lighted vehicle insured licensed drivers is what we're after.
Yeah, I agree with you.
I think right now you've got some noncompliance with the law. And if we do have an ordinance like this, I'm gonna encourage local law enforcement, you know, to, to drive these kids around on the road. And they need to think about what that they have to do when it comes time when they wanna drive licensed.
So when you say licensed driver, do you mean somebody with a permanent license at eighteen or somebody with sixteen with a, what do they call that type?
Tram.
Yeah.
Tram. Temporary.
So would it be a permanent license, maybe eighteen?
Or sixteen. No, they can cover with that sixteen-year-old license.
Okay, let me answer this, that brings up a new question. What is, is an egg exemption have a different age there?
Twelve.
Does it? Okay.
Well, that is unclear either.
What I'm getting at is, you know, there's a lot of people, they might be having, dead and they're going, maybe bringing lunch out or.
If you have.
Parts or whatever.
If you have an ATV exclusively used as an implement of peasantry, I don't think there's any age at all.
I don't think so either.
No, never the tractor.
Okay. So I, I'm, I'm seeing that scenario, I don't wanna.
No.
Prevent, prevent if somebody, you know, some family that uses it right, that says, I don't believe.
I know there's four kids at age ten that are better drivers than some kids in town at age twenty.
Well, they were put behind me along, along.
Yeah. Think of how mysterious. But no, this, this doesn't touch the egg exemption.
Okay. Well, it's good to know.
Yeah, I just thought of that one. Yeah, I just thought of that one.
Virginia, you have another comment?
If you're using it for agriculture, and you are, say, on the county line or this sort of thing, which ordinance will prevail? Which county?
You're using it for agriculture at the time?
Agriculture statewide.
That's statewide, either, that's a statewide.
Statewide, so.
Yeah.
As long as it's used for agriculture.
So the reason, really, is law enforcement. They have disordinance.
Disorder.
Nothing, nothing-
For allowable use.
As far as the state regulations on ag allowable use, we're not touching that at all. We're just making additional opportunities available for non-ag use. Is that correct, John?
For me, that's about the only thing that still, you know, lies in the balance, is I talked to Doug about this quite a little bit on Friday, and if his department, you know, was, wasn't supportive of this, it'd really be hard for me to be, because they're the ones that they're gonna be charged with enforcing all of this. Yeah, I wanted to hear what Dave's comments were, and I, that pretty much landed where I thought that it would be, is, I mean, they're just worried about safety, I mean, they don't wanna have an accident either, just one last thing. But, you know, here, a month or so, two months or so back, Dave came to us about allowing headsets, and whether or not that would be, you know, an allowable or reimbursable expense for, under their uniforms and equipment. And as I recall, and it was certainly mine, as I recall, we didn't want to encourage the use of cell phones, you know, looking at both sides of the safety issue there. This encourages the use of ATVs on county roads. It does. And I'm, forgive me, I mean, this is the business in which you're in, I mean, I would want it encouraged, you know, if I was selling kites, I'd want no restrictions, I'd want, you know, more freedom on selling, you know, flying kites. But, you know, the thing that we really do have to realize here is we are encouraging the operation of these things on county roads, good or bad.
So what are you going on?
Yeah, I understand that, you know, I get that.
Yeah, I think that goes back to John's point. We got a violation now, why not correct it?
Yeah, and it's, and it frees it up, you know, back to your question, I mean, we already have use for agriculture, this just opens it up for everybody, agricultural or not.
Amy, you have a comment?
Just a little comment. I heard, and I may not be totally on this the whole way, but that eight-year-old, it was either parents or grandparents, he was taking lunch to them or something, is what I heard. Went to the house, you know, went down to the house to get supplies or something, you know, something.
Does the ag, is that, go ahead.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm wondering, is whether it was ag-related, or was it, you know, where do you draw the line?
If he was taking them lunch, that falls under agriculture use. If he was taking them lunch, or getting them supplies, yeah. Could've been a number two pencil, you know, but as long as it's for ag use, and I understood it happened in a yard, you know, in a, so this provision certainly wouldn't have had any impact on the results of that or not. I think it's as well-written as it can be, once we get to draft number five. But I think it's as well-written as it can be, and once again, if Doug and his team, you know, is supportive of it, I probably in the end will be too, but just making sure we're understanding that we're encouraging their use.
It's just gonna be hard to get used to-
Yes.
An ATV, drive down the road, it's not bad.
You made, you made a great point, as long as we've got, you know, members of the press here today, is they play a really big role in this, because Doug's gonna be getting these calls from somebody out in, you know, section nine of Wheatland, and saying, "Hey, there's somebody running up and down my road here, and they're on an ATV, and it doesn't look like it's for farm use." You know, send a officer out here right away. Well, you know, it'll, part of it is educating the public, you know, to be on the alert for these things, they're gonna be out on the road quite a little bit more.
And some areas of the county, they have them ready. Non-ag use in the roads are ready, I see that.
Oh, yeah. And the cities are gonna have, they're growing this as well.
That's gonna be the next step.
That'll be the next step.
That'll be the next step, because, you know, you drive from the cities out to the road.
And currently, there is one makeup UTV that you can license. You can use, drive it in the city or anywhere. Got one here.
Yes, we do. John?
Yep. Okay. With that, we'll table it till we get draft number five and go next week.
Or you can put it on the agenda for consideration-
Okay.
And do the first reading. Courtney, we talked about having a public reading. You don't have to publish in advance unless you wanna do a quickie adoption, that's the purpose of that.
We'll do three readings.
Three readings. Or, each reading, wait until we actually read it. You just go through the stages, three, three readings.
You can do the first and second, or do the first and wave it, or the second and wave it, and go from there.
And I think that's good, you know, we had discussion last week, discussion this week. I'm glad there's been a lot of that, because you've been a learning experience as well. I'll get you drafted number five, and any other ideas come up in the meantime, you can post it, you know. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, John. Thanks, Doug. Tyler, thank you.
Thanks, Tyler. Thanks, Doug.
Okay, we'll put that back on the agenda for next week then. Okay, go down, third item is to approve a fireworks permit for Bruce Nelson in Highway thirty in Glidden, that's in your packet. That's for the third or fourth of July.
Yeah, he applies every year, and I don't know of any problems, I'd make a motion to approve that.
Second. Got a motion and a second to approve, approve the fireworks permit for Bruce Nelson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same say.
You have those forms here.
Yes.
That is Paul asking about this.
Yeah, we'll need this thing. I like you, Ryan. Can you check out all that experience?
For sure.
Gotta move ahead about the tape to me. They said today is Star Wars Day. Did you hear that?
May fourth.
May the fourth be with you.
Oh. You kidding me?
No, no, no.
May the fourth be with you.
Can you edit that out?
Tomorrow's Cinco de Mayo, which is much more important than Star Wars, okay, let's have, let's get a priority.
Okay, with that, we'll go down next to the pre-class C liquor license, outdoor service Sunday sales for Four Oars Tavern Incorporated.
Got the tavern sold, huh?
My question here is, do we have to provide a drawing for outside sales?
Joanne said something about since this was new, it was different than the rules that we know of.
Well, that's because that's why they got the draw, the draft, the drawing. I know years back, you used to have to provide a drawing for outside, outdoor service, from the state, from that, I guess.
Yeah, they will, they will.
It was just something I'd seen.
Oh, I know what it was, it was the Dram Shop Insurance. Since this is new, we don't see that.
Until after.
Yeah.
I will make a motion that we approve, application for Four Oars Tavern Incorporated, subsidy of draft, acquisition of draft, Dram Insurance.
Okay, got a motion in the floor?
I'll second that.
Got a motion and a second to approve the class C liquor license for Four Oars Tavern in Roselle. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same say.
We've approved the infrastructure, and we already got a business opening.
Yeah, well, we have the infrastructure approved.
Economic development for Roselle.
Okay, go down to item number five, is resolutions for inter-fund operating transfers, and that's in your packet, and it has to do with transfers or secondary roads.
I will make a motion that we approve the transfer from Rural Services Basic Fund to Secondary Roads.
I'll second that.
Okay, got a motion and a second to approve the Rural Services Basic Fund to Secondary Road Fund. All in favor, say aye. I don't know, no, it's resolution.
Yes.
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 Motion carries.
We all need to sign that one.
Sign it.
Yep.
Sir, you need two? Do you need two, Sam?
No, I have the other one.
Okay.
I don't have to.
Yeah, there's two.
I was pushing sixty, but I'm hard, I don't think that's a compromise.
And we have a second resolution as well.
Another resolution, and this resolution is from the General Basic Fund to the Secondary Road Fund.
I would make that motion to transfer from General Basic to Secondary Road.
Got a motion, you need a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, got a motion and a second. Roll call.
Can I, sir?
Yes.
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 Motion carries, pass this one around to-
Okay, with that, we'll go down to the sixth item on the agenda, is the manure management annual updates. We've got three of those today. First one is for Twin Hill LLC, Joe Danner, being section thirty-two of Pleasant Valley Township, and that one, the crop rotation was changed, and he's using manure analysis. Second one is Quant Farms in section twenty-seven of Pleasant Valley Township, and there are no changes to that manure management plan. And then the last one is Brett Halber in section nine of Ewalt Township, and he's using, changing crop rotation, and also using manure analysis. So that's the three manure management plans for the day. With that, we'll go down to the committee reports. Neil?
Would you like to start? Okay. On Tuesday, we had a meeting, per conference call, concerning the director's review for Molly Scott for our CPC PC. Anyhow, it was basically just a review, she's actually contracted with Region Twelve, and she got a very favorable review. Also, I got a notification from Don that the mental health advocate law has been passed by and signed by the governor, mental health advocate. And this doesn't affect us directly, because we have no issues with our mental health advocate in Carroll County, it only affects us indirectly because of an issue we have with a mental health advocate that isn't, works for all the other counties in Rolling Hills, which we are a part of. Also, I had breakfast with Senator Segabart this morning, and talked to him a little bit about the legislation, how it's getting wrapped up, and it kinda mirrored what Bill Heckroth said, that of course, they're on their own now, they've lost their per diem, and the big hangup is the financial picture, which has to do with education spending, and the, they're rather divided on ninety-nine percent of the revenue versus a hundred and two percent, which the two parties disagree there. It's in conference committee now, and it could be there for a long time. He also talked about Medicaid expenses, how they are really blowing up and getting out of control, and he expressed the importance of having managed care to take some of this and get it under control. He also talked about some of the legislations on eminent domain, and this has a lot to do with what's happening north of here, with Rock Island Clean Line, and also the oil pipeline. One of the options, and he mentioned several, was that before they could do eminent domain for any property, they had to have seventy-five percent of the current owners already in approval. And I guess everything else was pretty well detailed in Heckroth, so I won't duplicate that. Okay, those are the reports.
Thanks, Neil. Amy?
Tuesday, I had another meeting with the Biogas people, got together again, and had another meeting, follow-up on that, and there's no real changes there, they're still trying to put together their initial investment for their study, and that's where that's at with that. And then on Tuesday night, I had a fancy company with Head Start, went through the financials early on, there were no health and safety playground issues. They talked about the self-assessment, there's, that's an ongoing thing, continuous assessment and everything. School readiness committee is gonna meet May sixth, go through those results, and then they got, the class results came back in, from one of the reviews we had, and they looked good, we cannot really determine how they are, because we can only compare it to last year's scores, we won't know what the rest scored until the whole season, definitely do them all across the nation. But right now, from what compared to last year's scores, they look very good. Talked about the physical Hersha follow-up, they were, those interviews went very well. We did have some staff updates, we didn't have any IMPI alerts. They talked about the Head Start and Early Head Start parent evaluations, they were very positive. And that was based about classrooms, numbers were all up on it, and we're down a couple on them, and starting from mid-March, they do not refill those slots anymore, because very soon, schools are gonna be out, so they don't do that. Thursday night, I was supposed to have a new opportunities board meeting, that got canceled last minute, because we couldn't get a quorum, because everybody was in the field, and spent several trips up to Roselle, they have, on the west side, they've got, you know, they've got that paved and made thoroughfare, and they are trimming for the shoulders on each side, they have not paved that yet. They did pave on Wednesday on the south side, and had tight corners work around Mid-America Poles. Mid-America did not wanna move many of them, so we had a, we've got a gap, and they gotta fill. I go to today, they have got the north side pretty well courted out, and they were, had a milling machine in there, and we're, they're milling the east way up now, taking asphalt off top of that, and they're also working on the storm drain on the east side that crosses the road. And then on Friday night, I went to the Main Street Iowa Awards, very interesting program. Man shine like a true star, as they always do. They received four awards, one for reaching a million-dollar investment, and my understanding, they by the end, by the end of this year, they hope to be, it'll be over two million. Gene Statlander got a volunteer award, and then from all the awards, that they're competing against the whole state, Deb's Corner Defeat got the award for the best boss of the, for the front, from this.
Fasha.
Fasha, okay, I got you. Words, who the, the Fasha, and I don't know if you remember what it looked like, I mean, they did, because she got overall in the state on that.
but it will be in and along highway, or the Lincoln Highway, but it's not necessarily bordered by anything specific, like within so many feet of the original highway. They, they want to see to it that travelers, you know, it's, again, it's to promote tourism, of course, but the impetus of it is to ensure that travelers will go into the cities that are alongside and anywhere nearby, so say for an example, even though like Templeton doesn't, you know, have, you know, direct access to, you know, the Lincoln Highway went through it or anything, but they might have something interested, you know, such as Templeton Rye, which has some heritage and some roots, you know, back to the Chicago days, you know, that would, you know, take people into Templeton and so on and so forth. So, it was mostly just an informational meeting and they hope to have these about two to perhaps as many as three times per year. They are seeking what is called a federal, national scenic byway designation, they currently don't have it, they have a statewide designation, but they don't have a federal and what that would do would be open up federal funds for it and things like that. So, that was on Tuesday and then on Prairie Rivers is the name of that agency, by the way. And then on Thursday night, a pretty busy Thursday night because we had E-911 and EMA, those meetings are always run concurrent to one another, but as you know, Jeff Kahler is retiring effective June 8th, he was the chair, chairman for both of the agency and the commission and so part of the agenda was to seek new chairpeople for it. Yours Truly is, was named the chairperson for E-911 and Doug Bass was named chairperson for EMA. And then Jim Bruggeman from Templeton Fire Department has graciously accepted Vice Chairman for both the commission and the agency. We did do a budget amendment for E-911, that was to accommodate the GEO Comm installation, about $106,000 expense, of which we had $100,000 grant for it, so it would only affect the budget by about $6,000. And that GEO Comm is complete, complete and fully operational and then now various agencies can get their own mapping devices for their mobile units and become fully accessible to the system. A little, additional information is there's currently an evaluation of all seven fire repeaters in there because that's gonna be the next project taken on by E-911 and then obviously, I'm gonna have to take a lot of training and Jeff has graciously offered as much time as necessary. Jason Huffman, who is the comm center director, has also graciously stepped forward and said he would do a lot of the legwork in terms of invoicing and going through bills and things like that, so I feel better about it that he's gonna step in. And then EMA was very brief, Sarah had brought everybody up to speed on the Carroll County Preparedness Coalition full-scale exercise that will take place on August 19th, that will involve Kemper High School and perhaps either the Manning High School or the Manning Hospital. It's gonna be a full-scale exercise that will involve all of the agencies and it will be multi-jurisdictional. And then she brought some information about the bird flu, the avian flu, there is no known cases of it here in Carroll County, but they are on alert and everybody knows about what's going on with the counties nearby. And then following that, I ran across the street over to the sixth, fifth meeting for the Carroll Library Steering Committee and they had presented us with two more options for the library and the Steering Committee voted to accept one option to remodel the existing facility to the tune of about $700,000, which was significantly less than the initial proposal because it will involve less and won't be moving any walls. And then the expansion was, they approved another one and that is about a $2.8 million proposal and remember, the charge was, is to try and keep it under $1.8 million. There were other options that were considered that would be closer to the 1.8, but it was 2.8, the option, they call it 4A, which is $2.8 million, that they would make recommendations to the city council, there'll be one more meeting on May 14th, just to fine-tune anything before it goes to the city council. My guess is, is that it won't go any further than that because the library board and foundation is not supportive of either plan. Not enough space. So I don't think it's gonna go any further than that, but we'll see. Oh, one more real quick thing, Holmes Murphy, Courtney and I visited a little bit more about that on Friday, we were trying to set up a meeting where everybody could kinda be in attendance for this teleconference and wasn't meeting everybody's schedule and, you know, Pat just graciously offered, he goes, hey, says, you know, if you guys wanna sit on this, that's fine, but all I'm going to do is act on your behalf anyway and it's essentially how the motion was, was presented anyway. So, he and I, he just wanted to make sure that I let Teresa Newton know that to be expecting his call, that Carroll County has entered into an agreement with them, naming him in fact as our negotiator and so I did that on Friday morning and then he and I spoke a little bit more about the process itself and he expects to be able to make contact with her today. She, of course, would not be the decision-maker anyway, she's just gonna take it on up to underwriting, but he expected us to have an answer yet this week. And Courtney had provided him with some of these top, the ICD-9 discounts from the local providers and once again, it's moving right along, so I expect to perhaps have something to us for Monday's agenda.
Okay, thanks Mark.
The only thing I had last week, I'm in the process of working with the mental health transfers, I talked to Deb Porter a little bit and then gotta get ahold of Pat Gray and Tom Feldman in regards to the mental health transfers, we're trying to work out a system there that may be involving Region 12, so that's also this week, so that's all I had last week.
Courtney?
I don't have anything.
Not, or? Any comments from those in attendance?
Is it known how many birds we have in the county of the bird flu?
None, none reported.
At this point, none?
None reported.
It's just home, birds.
I don't, do we have any later, late operations?
Well, she, she was asking me Thursday night about, is there something over by, between Halber and Arcadia, is there? She said that she thought maybe there was one over there, but I'm, I'm not aware of any poultry operations.
It's North Turkey.
There's turkey.
There's turkey north.
There's turkey up, yeah.
North and Rita?
South of Rita.
Or south?
The Vanners have one in South of Rita.
Okay, maybe that's where she was talking about, I thought it was between, yeah, I think she said between Arcadia and Rita now, but I think, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that'd be the only one.
All right.
Has there been any discussion on how this will affect 4H projects at the fair?
Not through emergency management, but beyond that, I, I wouldn't know.
If they do have chickens.
Poultry class.
Yeah, I haven't heard anything about any of this, county fairs or the state fair, how that's gonna affect them at all.
My understanding is hot weather kills this virus, so hopefully by the fair in July, it's gonna be a dead issue.
Dead issue, yeah. That's a good point.
Hopefully, unless it's something else.
Anything else? Matt, we're in order for your motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion, need a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same thing.
Who's got radio today?